Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to a special edition of the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission. We will call ourselves to order. Please note that all members of the commission are present and we'll begin the meeting as we do every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commission. We have no old business to discuss this evening, so we'll move straight to the new business. And first two items we have on the board are facade grant applications. We'll have Derek come up and give us the 200,000-foot overview.
Thank you, Corey. Good evening, Commission. Which one's first on the agenda? Sorry.
114.
114, all right. All right, 114 South Meridian Street, Travis Stouffer is with us tonight. He received Historic Preservation Commission Certificate of Appropriateness for window replacement, brick and mortar restoration, and also the, which includes removing the paint permanently from the brick. We'll go right into the estimates. Put that up on the screen. There we go. The low estimate is in combination of D4 Masonry Services and Whittaker Glass and Mirror. Brick restoration at 123,000 and the glazing, the windows and is 26,900 for a total of 149,900, the low bid. The high bid was a combination of Browning Chapman and CL Professional Services, the brick restoration at 148,250 and the windows at 27,000 for a total of 175,225. The low bid of 149,900 puts him into category five, which is an estimated cost of $101, $100,001 and $150,000. Owner's share is $67,000 in that category. So the staff recommendation is for the RDC to award $82,900 with the owner's share being $67,000 to equal the 149,900.
You have the pictures of the building?
Um, I probably have some pictures.
Is there, what is it, an insurance agency in the first floor?
Insurance agency, a massage and wellness center, and then apartments upstairs, two apartments, correct?
Just making sure I was thinking about the right building.
Yep. Sorry, let me get here. Yep. So nothing groundbreaking, changing necessarily, the, actually, you know, whoever replaced those windows when they did, treated it pretty well. They didn't reduce the size of anything on the upper windows there. So it's just fitting the new windows back into those spaces. The down, the first floor windows were certainly manipulated at some point. This is not a full storefront restoration, but he is improving the window spacing by taking the four windows down to one on each side and getting rid of the grid pattern within those. And again, this, 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 this brick is, and Travis can speak to this if you have any questions, but the brick is obviously the most expensive part of this and in serious need of some restoration. So, you know, as we talk about on the Historic Preservation Commission level, you know, painting these buildings is, is not the answer. That's what people think is the answer, sealing the building. But what it does in these cases is it traps the moisture in and doesn't allow it to get out. This brick is porous, the mortar is porous as well. It wasn't necessarily by design, it's just what they had at the time when these buildings were built and it's the way they work. The water is going to find a way in. Flat roof, you know, coping, everything that goes along with it, there's going to be water. And when that water gets in, the idea is it escapes through the porous brick and painting it creates much more brick failure than, than expected. So removing the paint is, is, is super important in this project.
Just sandblasting, repointing and?
Yep, fixing the bulges, you know, fix, fixing it all.
Awesome. Any questions from the commission for Derek? Anything the applicant would like to add?
I don't think there's anything extra. Just, we're just replacing all the windows with new windows that won't have the lattice in there and the brick will just be restored, paint removed from it and hopefully looking as much like it used to as we can.
Is this restoration around the whole building or just front of the building?
Yeah, it'd be around the whole building. It'd be a full, full ground and tuck point.
Or paint the same color as it was or?
No, no paint. No paint at all, it'd be all natural brick out there.
Natural brick?
Yes, sir.
Even better.
Thought we'd like that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Perfect, thank you very much. So with that, I would entertain a motion in regards to the facade grant for 114 South Meridian. And if any, does anybody need a reminder on the dollar amounts?
Eighty-two-nine.
Eighty-two-nine was staff recommendation, correct?
I see eighty-three-hundred.
Uh, there's a rounding situation, I believe.
I think that was the max that we, if I understand correctly, the max was 83,000. The recommended amount was 82,900 combined with the owner's obligation by Mr. I think, okay. I think that was it. So I would move that we approve the facade grant for 114 South Meridian in the amount of 82,900.
We've got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Congratulations, I'm excited to see it. I love when the, the paint comes off the brick. So thank you very much for putting time, a lot of money and energy into the building. That moves us to, looks like the next location south, which is 118 South Meridian Street. We'll have Derek back on that one as well.
All right, 118 South Meridian Street. This is the tiniest building that we have in our inventory on the square. If you know which one this is, it was, I think last it was a pawn shop of some sort. I believe the sign.
Gold shop?
Gold and silver, something or other, yes. So the applicant, Moody Pearl LLC, Jordan Moody, received a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission. This is, this is a unique project, I'll be honest with you. And it was very, it was very difficult to even get to the point of having an estimate report. So there's a lot of back and forth here, it's very unique. It's for a storefront restoration, front and rear. In the rear, there will be an addition to the building to add some square footage. It adds about 300 square feet, I believe, to the, to the rear of the building. That building did not go all the way back to the adjacent buildings for whatever reason. There's a little courtyard back there and if you, if you look right now, there's like a white vinyl partition that hides some of the HVAC equipment is what it's doing there. So addition to the rear of the building, new roof, gooseneck lighting, front and rear. And I have some pretty pictures to show you on this one. So maybe, I don't know, we'll start here. So this, this is, this is essentially the, the front of the building. Where the, where the door is, that, that storefront level, I can show you a picture, but it was, at some point, for some reason, it was covered up with like a limestone brick. So it's removing the limestone brick, putting, actually, the, when they demo the rear wall, they will take that brick, which matches the rest of the building and move it to this front. So it will blend in very well. And then the rear of the building will be new brick that is sourced from Curly Brothers is, is where that will be sourced from. And it, it matches the tones, but to keep the, the front of it consistent, they're going to use that brick from the back. The rear doesn't look much different than the front, other than the configuration of the, the door and a couple of windows. This is the floor plan of the building. So you can see it's, it's pretty small, it's about 11 feet wide, right at 11 feet wide. And there'll be two offices, a reception area, conference room, and a, one small bathroom. So this is a real estate office is what this becomes.
Did you say they were adding square footage?
They're adding square footage, yes.
Was that in the rendering?
Um, it's, it's in the, it's in the, it is in the floor plan, so let me, if I can.
It essentially goes back to flush with the buildings adjacent, right?
That is correct.
That's fine, thank you.
You good?
And then it's single story right now, correct?
Correct, it remains single story.
Okay.
Yep.
Have the pictures there, front and back, yeah?
I do.
And then I'm assuming the HVAC that's back there now is being repositioned?
It is, yes.
For the building to the south?
That, that, that back wall, so the, the, the flat roof slopes to the back and there is a parapet wall essentially at the back and the units will be installed up there and they'll be hidden.
Got it. Awesome.
So that, there's, here's some of the, there's some of the pictures of, of the current elevations, basically. You see the limestone brick there and then you can kind of see what's going on behind the, the white vinyl partition wall. That's, that's what that white vinyl partition wall is hiding there, is that ugliness back there. So rather that white vinyl partition be there than to see this, of course, but all that goes away. So the, the rear of the building, Dr. Taylor, as you were asking, is extended from that existing rear back there.
Thank you.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna build a wall out to cover the site of the air conditioning units, is that it? Is that the idea?
So the, the rear wall comes out flush with the adjacent properties and there's a parapet on top of that new rear wall. It's like a three-foot parapet wall where the, the roof, where it hits the, the back wall gives them enough space to install those AC units up there. And those, those AC units are actually, what you see there today is for the building next door is the way that works. So there was, there's some agreements with the adjacent property owners, Travis being one of them, that allowed this project to move forward. That was part of the conditions when they made application to the HPC because it does extend the rear and permanently close some openings that were there once upon a time on the adjacent buildings, but have been long since bricked over. So I wanted to make sure that both property owners on each side acknowledged what was going on, signed off on it. And Mr. Moody did negotiate with Mike North for the placement of the air conditioning units. We went back and forth for a while on that. They originally wanted to just hang them on the back of the north building and, and you know, you see that from time to time where they're kind of up on a shelf. They said, no, they've got to be hidden some way. So that's where we were negotiating and getting to this point.
So is this going to be a storefront also on the backside?
Well, I mean, it's, it's accessible exit and entry, but not necessarily storefront.
Additional parking back there, be easy access, I would assume.
Yep. And Mr. North does lease those spots, so I don't know that Mr. Moody will lease spots from Mike North or not, but he has that option for sure.
Eric, I have a question. Are we now starting to work on backs of buildings instead of the facade by itself?
Um, well.
We've gone from facade to complete building.
Facade is exterior. So.
It's what?
Exterior.
It also says what?
In terms?
Of anything, yes. What does facade mean?
Facade is the exterior of the building. And in the HPC world, approvals have to take place for any part of the facade that is visible from public right-of-way.
Does facade mean the front of the building?
No, it means the exterior.
I would argue, especially the location on that and the openness of everything behind it, I, I almost think that side's very valuable and very important.
I just don't want to get into a whole bunch of new things coming up.
I mean, you could use terms like storefront, which mean the front of the building, but when you start talking about facade, I mean, just as the, the last applicant, there are three sides of that facade exposed on Travis's building. There are two facade sides exposed on this building. Typically, with most of them, they're, they're two sides, but if you get a corner building, you get into three sides. If there's a building that's taller than the neighboring building and it's a corner building, you can get into four sides of a facade. So yeah, facade, technically facade is defined by the exterior of the building, front, backside, doesn't matter. It's, it's the exterior.
Any other questions for Derek?
Would you like me to read the estimate report?
Sure, let's take a look at the estimate report.
You have it in front of you, I know you do, but we can read it into the record here?
Oh, because we broke down into components, okay.
Yep, so we have, we have the roof side, which I can start with, would be the second page of the estimate report. Roofs, as you may recall, are separate from the facade side of the grant program and they are eligible for a max amount of 30%. It's just a straight 30% on the low bid. So Castillo Roofing was the low bid at 10,680 and Sycamore Construction LLC was the high bid at 12,330. At the 30% level for a roof, staff recommendation is to award the roof part of the project 3,204 with the owner being responsible for 7,476. As we get into the front and rear portions of the building, there's just a ton going on here, as you can see. It's a combination of a lot of different vendors and contractors, but we were able to dial it in and get it into a situation where I could report it to you all. So on the low side, Samuel Gonzalez Masonry, in combination with Curly Brothers supplying the brick, was the low bid at 5,777. North Side Glass is the door and window provider at 8,100. Recovery Electric, only the electric for the, that is supplying the gooseneck lighting is digested into this estimate report. Like I said, it's a full restoration project inside and out, but the inside stuff, electrical plumbing HVAC does not qualify. So it's only for the electric work required to power those gooseneck lighting. The low bid was 683.50. Fields Gutter was the low bidder on the gutter system for the rear, which you saw in those elevations I showed, at 485. And RNG Home Improvements was the low bid on all of the structural components that do qualify within the facade grant, but those structural components only can amount to 25%. So what you see is the 5,927.75 is 25% of the total structural cost for that project. So the low estimate totals 20,973.25. The high side was Sycamore Home, a combination of Sycamore as the contractor and Home Depot as the brick supplier at 8,850 and some change. Whittaker was the high side on the windows and doors at 10,030. Kings Electric for the gooseneck lighting was 1,369.60. And Indianapolis Roofing, the high side on the gutters at 1500. Sycamore Construction was the high side on the structural components and that 25% totaled 10,982.50 for a grand total of 32,732.10 on the high side. So the low side at 20,973.25 puts this application in category one, an estimated cost of improvements of $0 to 40,000. As you can see, the owner's share in this category is 25% of the eligible cost, flat 25% with the max grant being 75%. So 25% owner's share is 5,243.31. And the maximum grant, which is the recommendation for the RDC award, is 15,729.94. Mr. Moody could not be here tonight, but his grandparents are here. If you have any questions for them, they have some knowledge of the project and would be happy to answer any question that you might have for them. You can ask them how, what kind of person their grandson is or what you, whatever you want to do.
I think we ought to put them on the stand.
That's your choice.
No, I'm just kidding, just kidding.
Have any?
What was the roof amount again?
3,204.
Correct.
Any other questions for Derek? Any outs?
What was the total, Derek?
Eighteen, nine, thirty-three.
For, which, oh, for, for both put together?
Eighteen.
Eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four cents.
He's the man.
Any follow-up questions for the applicant's family? Perfect. So with that, I would entertain a motion in regards to 118 South Meridian and we could do it with separate amounts or just a total amount per the, the staff recommendations.
I'll make a motion, we approve the roofing agreement in the amount of 3,204 for the 118 South Meridian Street project.
Had a motion to approve the roof portion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries and then that would leave a motion available for the remainder of the facade, the restoration.
I'll make the motion that we approve the restoration of the storefront addition and rear for 15,729.94 for the 118 South Meridian Street project.
Had a motion to approve per staff recommendation, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you guys very much. Two buildings next to each other, that's pretty exciting, I'm not going to lie. I love that we're, we're going, reaching out from the square. So thank you guys very much. That moves us on to?
Derek, good question.
Sure.
Derek? Is anybody talking about the, and I think it's probably the same building where Rocket Liquors is and, and Adler's and is that all one building or?
It's not, it's separate buildings. Yeah, yep, so the old Adler's there where the heart of Lebanon has moved into on the storefront level. I don't know if you've, you've seen that or not, but the heart of Lebanon.
Yeah, I have. Well, I was looking at, well, one day I just happened to be up, while I was up looking at the 114 property, looking at both these properties. And I just happened to turn around and look at Rocket Buildings and I thought, is there any discussion with anybody to try to fix that?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's, the parapet up there, is that what you're referring to, the, the little bit of a lean that it has? It, it has been that way, it's not getting worse, I can tell you that. You can go back into Google Images, Street View, and you can pull those up, but you can go back about a decade and it's, it's the same condition it is today. I have reached out to those people, they are aware that there is a facade program, but have not had any movement on that yet.
What about the, I think I've asked you this before, what about the building across the street that has a lot of stuff up top that seem to be falling?
That is.
Is there any interest of trying to do any repair in that facility?
There is a purchase agreement under negotiation right now for that building. The current owner, not going to do it. Yeah. Leave it at that.
Okay.
The new owner has full intent to come with a package, for sure. Yep. Potential new owner.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Derek. All right, so that moves us on to item C on our agenda, which is Paradise Ice Lease Resolution. So as this commission remembers at the last meeting, we were in discussions on a resolution of a lease dispute. Just to give you guys an update on that with, with that lease dispute with Paradise Ice, we have done some negotiations, we've had some conversations and essentially, would it be my recommendation?
I think as, as we talked informed in executive session, we met with so Corey as the president of the commission and with Derek, me, and then the mayor met with the owner of Paradise Ice to talk about it and went through those discussions and then ultimately the owner came back with a counter to us, which is what is Corey's going to talk about.
Yeah. So just to kind of outline what that resolution would look like, it would be a tenant improvement reimbursement of $20,000, a return of the security deposit, which was 3,600 that was received in the purchase by the RDC, return of two rent checks totaling 2,600 and the remainder of the term of the agreement, which was discussed as August 31st, would be at a rent-free agreement. The sums of those amounts would be payable at that August 31st date. So that's kind of the outline of what we discussed. So if the commission were to consider that as a resolution, I would look for this commission to authorize the president to finalize that settlement agreement pending final legal review.
I have a question. Does that mean on August 31st, he has to be completely out of the building, period?
Correct, that would mean at, at August 31st, the building would be turned back over to the redevelopment commission.
I move we authorize the president, along with legal counsel, to seek terms as set forth, as just presented.
So we do have a motion to approve as presented, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you very much. Item D, we were just going to do a quick update on the purchase agreement for 124, 126. on the purchase agreement for 124, 126. Just staying super high level based on timing this evening, as well as kind of where we're at. We have been in some negotiations on the 124, 126 North Lebanon Street. I believe we are very, very close to having all of those items kind of hammered out and agreed upon pending this commission's final approval. So the intent would be to bring a proposed purchase agreement to our next meeting, and hopefully we would have consideration at that point. So anything additional you would like to add, Rob? Okay, perfect. Any other questions on that piece? Good deal. So that takes care of all the business on the agenda. I would move on to claims. We were delivered the claims previously, so I would entertain a motion to pay our claims.
I'll make that motion.
Had a motion to approve by Dick.
Second.
And a second by Craig. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And the last one of the evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. Eye. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.